I'd like to call October 15th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Our first order of business is the invocation by County Manager, Mr. David Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord be with the commissioners in their deliberation and grant them knowledge and guidance as they look upon the responsibilities that are before them. Continue to be with those who have been devastated by Hurricane Florence and Hurricane Michael. Guard their hearts and minds. Give them peace that surpass all understanding. Bless the work of the relief agencies and their continued dedication of helping to rebuild our communities after these natural disasters. May their work continue to be guided by the grace and strength that comes from you alone. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. We will continue to thank you and praise you for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, hear us in a moment of silence. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. Our pleasure allegiance by Deputy County Manager, Ms. Sharon Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome Sheriff Hans Miller here tonight to make us safe. We ask all that's in attendance to please set your cellphone to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public two opportunities to speak during the meeting. Comments during the first public comment period should be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue oriented with the agenda items for this particular meeting. The second public comment period is at the end of the meeting and may be on any issue upon the Board of Commissioners' ass control. During the second public comment period, citizen can be addressed to Board for up to five minutes each. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in an order in which they signed up to speak and will address the comments to the Board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules and procedures, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period that's at the end of the agenda. With no other items being considered separately, a motion to adopt the meeting agenda is now in order.
The move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the items on the consent agenda. Need a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any item that any of the commissioners would like to have removed and placed at the rear of the meeting for additional discussion? Here in none, the motion carries. We're now at item three, which is the public comment section for the first part of that public speaking and has items that's on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, one person has signed up. This is the first public comment period. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules and procedures, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner comment period on the agenda. Comments should be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue oriented with the agenda items for this meeting. Sean Curtis, 4445 Gum Branch Road.
Evening Commissioners. I'm Sean Curtis at 4445 Gum Branch Road here in Jacksonville. I own that property, which is approximately three acres of commercial property. I'm also the owner of Angry Ginger Irish Pub here in the city limits of Jacksonville. The reason I came before you guys tonight is because Half Moon Creek runs behind my property. Obviously, as many citizens in Onslow County and our surrounding areas, I took a lot of damage with Hurricane Florence. We took about six foot of water in my facility. With that, the gas station across the street obviously flooded out. I've owned that property for 14 years. I've never took a drop of water inside, but the gas station has flooded multiple times. The old fire department down there at the bottom of the hill has flooded out a lot. Now, all their debris and everything else floated across the street. That debris is now sitting in the creek. Earlier this evening, I asked Mrs. Wong for the email address to the gentleman in front of me that I sent you all pictures, just a few, because I know you're busy, so that way you can look and see the amount of debris and trees that are down inside these creeks and waterways. I'm sure it's not just mine, it's throughout the county. Back after Floyd, the county had sent crews out to clean out the waterways a little bit and the creeks. Well, none of this debris that's in this creek in Half Moon there is any of my debris. It belongs to the businesses across the street, next door to me, and everything else. The EPA has been down there. They took a VAT truck and sucked out all the oil from one of the containers from the business to my left. The Department of Environmental Quality has been down there to my shop and looked at the stuff in the creek and everything else. I've been down here to the county office three times in order to ask to see if somebody would, you know, maybe enforce these businesses to come across the street and clean up their mess. Nobody has yet to do anything. So I know that there are inspectors scheduled again, because I came down today, to come down sometime maybe this week. I heard that there may have been a letter. I have personally talked to all the business owners and they said, no, they're not doing it. They know it's their stuff, they know it's their debris, they are choosing not to. I've called the sheriff's office, asked for a littering fine. The sheriff's office said it's not my problem. It was clean.
Your time's up.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Cotton, let's make sure that the people that speak, the first speaker, speak on an item that's agenda related. I don't, can't tie that to an agenda-related issue. So if any speakers come up, make sure you, on the first half, it's got to be agenda-related. So speak, when you come up to speak, make sure you tie your public comment to the agenda item. Just trying to follow the rules.
Yes, sir. I follow you.
Anyone else? Okay, item four, presentations, Ms. Elizabeth Junick and Ms. Angela Lee.
Good evening Chairman, Vice Chairman Commissioners, and Mr. Cotton. The Disease and Incident Trends Report is given annually to the Board of Commissioners to provide awareness of the communicable and vector borne diseases in the county. In addition to providing situational awareness, the Disease and Incident Trends Report is also an accreditation requirement. Ms. Elizabeth Junick, Director of Nursing, will now present our report.
Good evening. This is the 2017 Onslow County Incident and Trends Report, which is reported in the 2018 year. Reporting cases of infectious diseases a vital step in controlling and preventing the spread of communicable diseases and is one of the three core functions of public health. Due to the serious threat to public health, the North Carolina General Statute 130A requires reporting of certain and actual or even suspected communicable diseases to local health departments. The reporting timeframe is determined by the severity of the disease. Timely reporting is very crucial and what happens when we report communicable diseases or when physicians or clinics report communicable diseases, they're reported to the health department. Because the health department receives all the communicable diseases reports, they can identify a common place that that disease might have been gotten from. There are around 80 different reportable communicable diseases. Some examples are anthrax, tuberculosis, whooping cough, syphilis, and Ebola. The Onslow County Health Department received and investigated over 3,383 cases last year. Reporting of communicable diseases is HIPAA compliant and it does not constitute a breach of confidentiality. As you can see, we receive reports from hospitals, laboratories, restaurants, schools, and local providers. And then at the health department, there is a communicable disease nurses that take that information and put it into the North Carolina Electronic Disease Surveillance System for confidential reporting to the Division of Public Health. The Division of Public Health then sends the information to the CDC and the CDC utilizes the information to look at the nation and what's going on with reportable diseases. By tracking the incidence of diseases, we gain a better understanding of the efforts, education, and resources needed to improve the health of our community. Sexually transmitted diseases are also, we also, we call, they're STIs, but we also say STDs. Sexually transmitted infections and diseases are used interchangeably. Sexually transmitted infection prevention is a core public health activity. We encourage practicing safe sex, which includes steps taken to protect oneself against sexually transmitted infections. These steps include, but are not limited to, utilizing barriers such as condoms or dental dams. Sexually transmitted infections are behavior-linked diseases that are spread through sexual activity and blood. Women can also transmit those infections to their unborn children. Sexually transmitted infections can make it so that women are not able to have children. So it's very important that we catch those infections early and we're able to cure them if possible and prevent the spread of the disease. These are some of our most common sexually transmitted diseases, syphilis, chlamydia, gonorrhea, and non-gonococcal urethritis. We will go into more detail as we go along. Chlamydia is one of the most prevalent sexually transmitted infections in the county. It presents a major concern for public health because a mass majority of the folks that have chlamydia don't even know that they're infected. A major consequence of the untreated chlamydia is pelvic inflammatory disease, which makes it hard for women to become pregnant. A chlamydia diagnosis is most common in 15 to 24. We had approximately 2,162 cases of chlamydia in Onslow County for 1718. We screened approximately 1,849 people for chlamydia last year and Onslow County ranks number seven in North Carolina for chlamydia. The year before, we ranked number nine. When you look at gender distribution, it appears that women have a higher incidence of chlamydia. However, this may be due to screenings conducted during routine reproductive health visits and therefore we pick it up more frequently. Gonorrhea is another commonly encountered sexually transmitted infection in Onslow County and if untreated, it can also cause infertility. In 2017, there were 339 cases of gonorrhea reported among Onslow County residents, which is an increase compared to the 305 cases reported in 2016. The gonorrhea diagnosis is most common in those age 15 to 39. Onslow ranked 43 for gonorrhea in North Carolina and the previous year we ranked 44. Looking at the history of chlamydia and gonorrhea, we see in 2017, there were 1,631 confirmed chlamydia cases compared to the 1,854 cases reported in 2016. The annual number of chlamydia cases spiked in 2016 but slightly decreased in 2017. Gonorrhea has remained predominantly consistent but did show a slight increase in the last two years. One of the things that we're able to do now to help control the spread of the disease is we have what we call expedited partner therapy. And when somebody comes in and they're diagnosed with gonorrhea or chlamydia, we're able to give them a prescription to take home to give to their partner. Untreated partners are an important source of reinfection, which increases the risk of negative reproductive health outcomes. Another thing that we do to try to get ahead of it is mapping of sexually transmitted infections and this helps optimize intervention and prevention strategies. Overlapping of core areas among STDs suggests that intervention and prevention strategies can be combined to target multiple STDs effectively and should be targeted to core areas rather than uniformly across Onslow County. Also, the numbers included in the mapping are the military base as well. HIV and AIDS cases. HIV stands for Human Immunodeficiency Virus, also known as HIV. And when somebody is infected with HIV, we say that they're HIV positive. HIV affects the immune system and we start to monitor what we call their CD4 count. That's their immune, that is their immune system. Once the person's count becomes, it's less than 200, they're considered to have full-blown AIDS. And AIDS stands for Acquired Immune Deficiency Syndrome. There are a lot of different things that we try to do to keep from spreading that disease. And one of the things that we refer out the closest places, Wilmington, is for what we call the PREP program. It's pre-exposure prophylaxis. And what happens is the partner takes a medication daily to try to help prevent from contracting Testing for HIV and AIDS remains a priority for our health department. Testing is critical prevention strategy and is the first step in connecting them to the preventive care and treatment services they need. Onslow County tested 2,355 residents through the North Carolina State Lab in 2016-17. This is the most concerning slide, our syphilis cases. There's a striking increase in the prevalence of syphilis in Onslow County. Syphilis is very easily treatable if it's detected early. Access to preventive education, early screening, detection, and treatment is critical, including women at risk for pregnancy to prevent congenital syphilis. There were 24 reported cases of syphilis in Onslow during 2017 as compared to 18 cases in 2016 and 16 cases in 2015. Syphilis is a serious infection that can cause health problems that range from a mild sore to death. We monitor for HIV and syphilis cases as there is a 50% likelihood that a person who is infected with syphilis is also HIV positive. Of those cases, almost 90% are men having sex with men. Foodborne illnesses. They are infections or irritations of the gastrointestinal tract caused by food or beverages that contain harmful bacteria, parasites, viruses, and chemicals. Examples of foodborne illnesses include salmonella, shigalosis, campylobacter, and E. coli. The CDC estimates that one in six Americans get sick from foodborne illnesses and 128,000 are hospitalized and 3,000 die each year. Onslow investigated an average of 11 cases per month last year. As you can see, we had one case of cryptosporidiosis, 94 cases of salmonella, one case of shigalosis, and 10 cases of campylobacter. Anyone can get a foodborne illness, however, there are some that are more likely to develop the foodborne illness. And those include infants and children, pregnant women and their fetuses, older adults, and people with a weak immune system like the HIV positive. The Communicable Disease and Environmental Health Staff work very closely to fully investigate all potential foodborne illnesses outbreaks to minimize illnesses in our community. Here are some of the other communicable diseases reported and investigated. These are some of the other that the health department received and investigated over the last year. This gives you an idea of how and what we monitor in our community. Onslow County Health Department works diligently to achieve full immunization coverage for the county's children by age two. We work with pediatric healthcare providers and community health centers throughout the county to meet this goal. In addition to infant, school-aged children, and adolescents, we also see college students and international travelers. Every fall, the department provides low-cost influenza and pneumococcal vaccines to county residents. One of the things that I just wanted to point out, we have flu shots available, but we also have high-dose flu shots that you don't hear many people talk about. The high-dose flu shots are for those that are 65 and older. They have four times the antigens of the standing, the regular dose. So it's important that we monitor what kind of flu shots we get as well. Rabies is a serious disease when left untreated and is almost always fatal. Rabies has the highest death rate from caused by a virus. Although rabies in animals is more common in wild animals, dogs are the source of most human exposures. Our health department works very closely with animal services to conduct animal bite and exposure surveillance. Last year, there were over 273 animal bite reports received by the health department. Of these exposures, post-exposure treatment was recommended for 96. Five animals tested positive for rabies and all of them were raccoons. Tuberculosis is one of the most common infectious diseases worldwide. One-third of the world's population is infected with TB. It is also complicated and potentially affects many parts of the body. It can remain latent for many years, leaving them unaware that they're even infected. Last year, Onslow County had two active TB cases and 22 cases of latent TB infections. Onslow County treated 21 cases total. We treat all active TB cases and patient-requested latent TB cases. It's important that we try to treat all TB-infected individuals because 5 to 10% of the people with latent TB will become infectious if not treated. Vector borne illnesses are bacterial and viral diseases transmitted by mosquitoes, fleas, and ticks. Vector borne diseases are among the most complex of all infectious diseases to prevent and control. We investigated over 168 tick-borne cases and confirmed one Lyme disease. We also investigated one mosquito-borne illness and confirmed one malaria associated with a traveler who was not from Onslow County. The health department has the responsibility for the health and well-being of the communities. Onslow County accomplishes this through mosquito control programs, mosquito bite prevention, education, and performing disease surveillance. Hepatitis C. The number of acute hepatitis C cases diagnosed in North Carolina in 2017 was 186, excuse me, 186, a decrease from 201 cases in 2016. The highest rates of newly diagnosed acute hepatitis C occurred among the 20 to 39-year-old group. This age group comprised of 51.6% of the total acute hepatitis C cases. We're thinking that the increase in hepatitis C cases has to do with the substance abuse issues that we have in our area. Another thing that we look at in this report is our emerging infectious diseases. Last year's flu season was horrendous and resulted in two deaths in Onslow County. Flu deaths in North Carolina equaled 391 during the 2017-18 season. There was also an Ebola outbreak in Africa. Hepatitis C in the United States, there are 2.7 to 3.9 million cases of chronic hep C. In conclusion, public health is crucial in ensuring the well-being of Onslow County citizens. It provides chronic and communicable disease prevention, control services, and comprehensive skilled home visiting services to reduce the severity and progression of the disease and prevent disease-related disabilities. Communicable disease prevention and control activities are the cornerstone of public health. With the continuing threat of new and emerging infections and in addition to the known reportable diseases and syndromes, the Communicable Disease Division's surveillance and control activities continue to be key in ensuring the health of our community. Do you have any questions?
Great brief bet.
Do you see any problem with this perception that the public has about immunizations and the fear of immunizations? Is that a problem that is beginning to take a foothold and have a negative adverse consequences here at all?
I tell you what, I'm going to call up Kristi Heath, our CD supervisor. I will say that most of the time that when we talk with parents and we educate them a little bit more, they'll come in and have their children immunized.
Right. We also have school outreaches. We're waiting for the schools to get back. They've kind of gotten thrown off this year because of Hurricane Florence. But we're doing school outreaches so that we can help cut down the amount of time that parents have to take off work, get their kids out of school, and all of that. We're ready for those outreaches. We're just waiting for the schools to be ready for us to come in and take care of that. Also, a lot of the children that come through our child health program, they're, all of those are checked for immunizations and we catch a lot of them at that time. We can immunize them right then and get them caught up to date.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Section B, State of the Community, or State of the County Health Report. Ms. Angela Lee, our Health Director.
Good evening again. In the intervening years between the community health assessment, Onslow County Health Departments required per North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and the accreditation mandates to provide an annual State of the County Health Report, the SAG. The purpose of this report is provided to the Board of Health, sorry, the Board of Commissioners and the public, is to list the health issues selected as priorities, state the progress made on the implemented action plans, review morbidity and mortality data, and include new and emergent issues and changes in the county that affect health concerns. I will brief you on all of those things during this report. In 2016, the Onslow County Health Department with the Onslow Memorial Hospital partnered to complete the Community Health Needs Assessment. From that assessment, health priorities were identified that both the Health Department and Onslow Memorial Hospital agreed to focus on each year for the next three years. The Community Health Assessment Team, which is made up of various community agencies and typically meets quarterly, they meet to share related updates on the priority areas. All of these agencies give their time and their talents and I'd like to take an opportunity to thank them for their committee work. The executed action plans that are focused on for these priority areas include suicide, blood pressure, diabetes. Those are the main areas that Onslow Memorial has taken for action. And then substance abuse, obesity, nutrition, healthy eating, and access to healthy foods. And those are the health department's priority areas. Suicide is a complex public health concern within our community and it's also the reason that Onslow County ranks in the worst 25th percentile for suicide deaths compared to our other eastern North Carolina counties. our other eastern North Carolina counties. The effects of suicide reach far beyond the person who chooses to take his or her life. It has lasting impacts on family, friends, and communities. The Health Department, along with Onslow Memorial Hospital, chose to endorse and promote an established support group, Jacksonville Survivors of Suicide, rather than create and facilitate a support group of our own. The Jacksonville Survivors of Suicide Support Organization was founded by Amy Sullivan, who is a licensed clinical social worker. It meets every second Tuesday at Rooted in Wellness from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This organization is focused on connecting families and friends of suicide victims with the necessary support and resources. We also have our Question, Persuade, Refer, which is a training that teaches how to recognize the warning signs of suicide, crisis, and how to question, persuade, and refer someone for help. These courses will be offered to our community members, our mental health, and our medical providers in order to equip them to better detect, assess, manage, and report and refer those who are at risk of suicide. Our blood pressure. You've probably already heard me speak about what's our next 10. It's our educational campaign, campaign that encourages residents to think about their goals, those that they have for the next 10 years, their next 10 meals, their next 10 miles walked, and what level of health will be required to achieve those goals. The campaign provided education and screening at the following events: the New Year, New You, the Onslow County Employee Wellness Fair, the Diabetes Walk, the Onslow Memorial Health Employee Wellness Fair, the Senior Expo, and they hope to provide that at the Jacksonville Oktoberfest. Our Check Change Control Program is an ongoing campaign that includes an online self-monitoring program that uses blood pressure readings taken at home to help achieve and maintain a healthy heart. Grant funding obtained allowed for the distribution of 150 blood pressure cuffs through the Onslow County Health Department, Onslow Memorial Hospital, our Community Paramedic Program, and the Kering Community Clinic, to all those who have enrolled in the Check Change Control Diabetes. In April, Onslow County Health Department adopted a new Diabetes Prevention Program curriculum, Group Lifestyle Balance. This program consists of 28 lessons over a one-year period, and within the first four months of this class, we've already seen significant progress. Several participants have lost over 35 pounds, and doctors have reported that A1C levels have decreased and blood glucose measurements were in normal range for the first time in years. So we're really proud of our participants. The Onslow County Health Department also continues to participate in the Diabetes Self-Management Program and the Diabetes Prevention Programs, both of which are designed to empower and help individuals who live with or to, to prevent diabetes. We have several other outreach programs where we assisted in a diabetes walk, which is in partnership with the Ally Temple Shriner Club, which took place on June 29th. And also, Onslow Memorial Hospital offered diabetes empowerment education sessions. We have our substance abuse, our bag tags, which you've seen those before, and we were lucky to get a Project Lazarus grant. So we have, we've added ReLo Pharmacy, our Henderson location, which offers a safe, secure disposal location for pharmaceuticals. We have distributed just shy of 4,000 bag tags to our community since this initiative began. And Onslow Memorial has held over two medication disposal events over the last year, and in one day collected 3,000 pounds of obsolete medication. So we're really excited, again, to collect those medications and keep them safe. We had other events that I've mentioned to you in a previous Board of Commissioner meeting when I provided the opioid update. We had our Johnson Pain Management Workshop, which we provided to healthcare workers. We had the Public Safety Event, which was an opioid crisis series. Opioid Epidemic Education Session at Jacksonville Country Club, which was for physicians, pharmacists, and mental health providers, as well as our opiates and meth exposure training for public workers, which we held here at the Onslow County Government Center, which was sponsored by Onslow County Government. We also, for Onslow County Government, we have created and developed a crisis team, and that is made up of our department heads here in Onslow County. And so we have secured several grants, which I'll mention a couple of those at the end. Again, all in an effort to address substance abuse. Obesity. The Health Department facilitated an obesity awareness activity that featured our Body Impotence Analyzer at several events. That specific analyzer, in case you're not aware of what that is, it's a scale that weighs your body mass, your water weight, muscle mass, fat-free mass, and your BMI. It's pretty popular to have that at events. We use that out in public, and we also use that during our diabetes prevention classes and our medical nutrition therapy classes. We also were able to partner with Parks and Rec when they hosted their Youth Fishing Derby Day, and were able to provide a cooking demonstration with healthy food options, again, in an effort to address obesity in our community. We have nutrition, healthy eating, and access to healthy food. We have updated food resource maps on our website. We'd love for you to go to our website at the Health Department for a more interactive map so you can identify where you can access healthy foods in our community. We have our Health Department assisted with three cooking nutrition videos starring our Child Health Supervisor, Whitney Jessick. And two of those videos were for the Fire Services Department, focused on healthy recipes and hidden sugars, and one was for lighting up Onslow. We also have six bulletin boards throughout the community that display health information and services. New and emergent issues. We have some of those that we address in our State of the Community Health Report as well. We have unpredictability that's associated with Medicaid transformation. We have political leaders throughout the state that continue to evaluate the potential impact of Medicaid transformation, how that will affect our clients, and how that will affect the agencies and local health departments throughout the state. As mentioned in the previous report, Onslow County is ranked seventh in chlamydia infections. So that's something that we want to address as well and keep in mind. Our Stop the Bleed recognition. We had a very successful Stop the Bleed campaign here in Onslow County. The greater the number of people who know how to control bleeding in an injured patient, the greater the chances of surviving that injury. We were able to train community members on using first aid kits, packing wounds, compressing and applying pressure. And we actually, at Consolidated Human Services, trained more people than the whole state of Oklahoma. So we're very proud of what we were able to achieve with that. And then mental health. We've always, again, tried to address mental health concerns within our community. We have challenges when it comes to mental health. We have additional challenges now after Hurricane Florence. We know that. There were many people who suffered significant loss during that hurricane, and we know that with that, we could have increased depression, increased substance abuse and use, and thoughts of suicide. So we want to make sure that we take additional care in addressing those mental health concerns and pay closer attention to that as we look at our action plans as well. Morbidity and mortality. On the screen, you'll see the top 10 leading causes of death in Onslow County. Our State of the Community Health Report focuses on many of these causes of death, both directly and indirectly. We're excited that we've experienced some success. We decreased adult obesity between the years of 2017 and 2018 from 30% to 27.9%. And we also saw improvement in physical inactivity from 24% to 21%. So we've got people who are being more active and moving a little bit more, so we're glad about that. However, we did see that life expectancy in Onslow County is at 77 years of age, which is six months shorter than the state average. Onslow County also, again, exceeds the state and most of our peer counties in our suicide rates. So we continue to make suicide a priority for our community in addressing that issue, and it is, again, one of our current action plans. So we still have some work to do in Onslow County in helping to improve the health of our community. The health of our community depends on the actions of each individual and the work of our leaders, our health professionals, and our community groups. Several new initiatives will positively contribute to the health of our community. We want to be open and, to partnering and collaborating with new activities with the YMCA in order to enhance the programming in both the agencies. We don't want to have any duplication. I know just from speaking to them earlier on, they have some great ideas. We want to make sure that we collaborate so that we can get some great programs out to our community, but that we don't have duplication. We also want to make sure that we develop and prepare our new Community Health Needs Assessment as part of our new regional CHAW, which will be out in 2019. We're focused on addressing the issues of substance abuse within our community. We have our new crisis facility opening in 2019. We have our opioid crisis grant through UNC School of Government and Blue Cross Blue Shield, as well as several other grants that address opioids. So we'll continue to work on those. And we know that thousands of Onslow County residents have been directly affected through these initiatives, and we've seen firsthand the improvements that they've made in our community. So we look forward to 2019 and to creating new action plans and initiatives. And I thank you for allowing me to present this report.
Thank you for your presentation. Any of the board have questions or comments?
Sherry, can you give us an update on the opioid, or, excuse me, the Crisis Center, the detox?
I'm waiting to receive that.
Yes, sir. Or, yes, ma'am, sorry.
As, as most of the folks that are watching, and certainly you all know, we are in the process of renovating a facility to be our Facility-Based Crisis Center in Onslow County. The construction or renovation project was put behind by a couple of weeks due to Hurricane Florence. There were obviously days that we were completely, you know, storm-oriented, and then there were a number of days that the workmen could not get here due to the road conditions. So they were, they were, they were basically put behind a couple of weeks by that. We are still moving very quickly and ahead of schedule in terms of when the provider will be ready. But the provider is working with us to get the proper furniture ordered, which is also covered by the grant, and they're working with the Division of Health Service Regulations to get their license secured so that they'll be able to open. Again, we don't have an exact open date because we're depending on the Division of Health Service Regulations for that, but we are looking for it to be early 2019, hopefully January timeframe.
Excellent. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to Item 5, Mosquito Abatement Funding. Ms. Angela Lee?
On September 14, 2018, Hurricane Florence impacted our state and our community. Large populations of floodwater mosquitoes typically emerge weeks after a hurricane or a flood. However, most of these are considered nuisance mosquitoes. Nuisance mosquitoes have an adverse impact on public health by hindering response and recovery efforts. Mosquito abatement funding has been allotted for 27 counties currently under a major disaster declaration. To receive funding, local health departments must perform or ensure specified activities as detailed in the scope of services. We must submit specific expenditures, activities reports, and follow, of course, all the restrictions and guidelines. Onslow County has been allotted $265,002 in mosquito abatement funding with no required county match. It respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners accept this mosquito abatement funding in the amount of $265,002.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Final offer on real property, Ms. Laura Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair and Commissioners. This is a final offer for land in the amount of $5,000. The initial offer was for $4,000, and it was approved by the board on August 20th. And it was advertised in the Daily News, and we did go through the upset bid process, and we did receive two upset bid offers. The parcel is 038-425, and it's located on Trout Street in the Stump Sound Township, and it's approximately 1.15 acres in size. It's a wooded lot. And if the board approves the offer, the property will be sold as is, will prepare a deed, transfer the property, and then remove it from the asset file. It's respectfully requested that the board consider the final offer in the amount of $5,000 for parcel 038-425. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Laura, a gentleman right there in the light blue shirt would like a list of the properties that we have that's coming up for auction. That's, that's public record, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Could you talk to him after the meeting and?
I sure will.
See if he can, see if you can help him.
Thank you.
Onslow Public Safety Collaboration Department of Justice Grant, Ms. Sherry Slater.
Good evening again, gentlemen. We are very happy this evening to bring an opportunity before the board. In accordance with the priorities set by this board to, for us to address the Crisis Center, and then in a more broad perspective, the opioid and mental health crisis in general in our community, we've continued to partner with some of our, our local community partners, the city of Jacksonville, of course, our, our own Sheriff's Office, and Trillium. We've worked together on several grant opportunities, and we, we brought one again in the, in the spring that we have before you. And with this board's acceptance, the Department of Justice has offered us a grant, or has awarded a grant to Onslow County. This grant would allow us to further enhance the services that we have been working on for the last two years. While it's not specific to the Crisis Center, it would allow us to purchase a digitized version of the Brief Mental Health Scan, which is that tool that we've been working with our local law enforcement agencies to implement using OnScene. So when a law enforcement officer responds to an incident that they believe has some mental health or substance use components, they can do this Brief Mental Health Screen, determine if their instinct or the observation that they've had on the street is correct, and make a decision about what type of intervention to then reach out for. Should they employ or, or call on our mobile crisis? Should they transport this person to a Crisis Center? What do they need to do next? And that, this screening tool helps them. We give them all sorts of training, but it's still helpful to have something that's evidence-based to back up what they're doing and, and the decisions that they're coming to on the street. So we would be able to purchase with this grant the digitized version of that tool, which will allow them then, should the decision be made that they need to be transported to the Crisis Center, the Crisis Center would then have access to this so that they immediately have the data. And when they, it'll expedite the drop-off. When the law enforcement officer drops the person off, the Crisis Center already knows who's coming, what the crisis is, and what the assessment shows. And they're able to move through that process more quickly, which was one of our primary objectives with the Crisis Center, was that that provider would be able to, to take that handoff in a very efficient and timely manner. Another piece that we're very excited about is this grant would allow for a full-time case manager in the detention center. What we know is we have a higher recidivism rate with the folks that are coming out of the detention center. They have missed appointments, they've missed medication, they're not set up for success, and when they're released from jail, they tend to quickly reoffend and end up back in the same situation. And the case manager's job would be to do those assessments inside the detention center, keep the contact with that person, but also make their plan for when they are released so they have as quickly as is possible an appointment with an appropriate provider to meet their needs. And the case manager would also follow up on that. Excuse me. Hey, Sheriff. So, so we, again, we have worked on this with our Sheriff's Office and with our, the Jacksonville Police Department. And our other municipal police departments are participating at the level they're able. They're trying to get the data together, and they're trying to also take the trainings that we're offering so that they can come on board with this system as well. So the two primary things from this grant would be, and the grant, again, is $741,000. The county's match would be met with the contribution that you all have allocated to the Crisis Center. So that's a, a nice way to make that match without having to allocate additional funds. And it would primarily support the two items that, that I've discussed, and some other things that, that are going to be built into the grant. But the two primary items would be that digital version of the mental health screening tool, so the officers will be able to do it right from their car, on their mobile devices. And then the full-time case manager to work with those folks in the detention center, trying to actively address the recidivism rate and bring the number down in a very real way for those folks. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
We need this grant. Motion to approve.
Absolutely. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Hey, let me, let me say something about that. Sherry, thank, thank you for doing the work on this, along with the Sheriff's Department, because, you know, a lot of people don't understand what goes on. This project has been ongoing with the Detox Crisis Center for the last two and a half years, and we haven't stopped despite Florence and funding issues and the fact that we get a 750-something thousand dollar grant, and the only matching funds that we have have already been allocated towards our facility. I think that's a win-win for us. So I think we should look forward. So I think we should look forward and move on. Sheriff, I appreciate your efforts in that as well. I can't wait, because we are in desperate need of this detox center, Crisis Center, and I think it's going to benefit the citizens tremendously. So I just want to say, great job, outstanding.
Thank you, thank you. For my part, we're looking forward to working more closely with the Sheriff's Department and the Detention Center and, and having this position be available to actually work one-on-one with those folks.
If I understand this grant correctly, then you're going to have someone within the jail or servicing those that are incarcerated with mental health issues? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct. Yes, sir. This case management position will actually be housed in the Detention Center's medical unit, as is written in the grant, and it will provide, again, that one-on-one case management for folks who've been identified to have a, a mental health or substance abuse issue or concern, and will work with them to make their exit plan so that when they're, when they are released, they have the proper appointments set up, the proper connections to those community resources. We know that for folks that are in mental health crisis, the, making the proper connections is critical, and it's typically something that they are challenged to make happen. They already are in crisis, and, and making those appointments and keeping them is something that's very difficult for them. So having a case management, manager dedicated to identifying what appointments are necessary, making those appointments, and following up to make sure folks got to those appointments, I think is, is again, a way that we can truly impact the recidivism rate.
Well done.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Item six, A, Civic Affairs Appointments, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
We approve the motion.
The Civics Affairs Committee is comprised of a core group of 23 members. 16 of those are appointments made by the Commissioners. The following members have expressed an interest in appointment and/or reappointment in their respective categories. First is Richard Walker, Seat Two, term expiring September 30, 2020. Andrea Davis, Seat Three, September 30 of 2020 is the term expiration. Sandy Wirick Crane, Seat Four, again, September 30 of 2020. Raquel Painter, Seat Seventeen, and that one is until no longer serving. And Joanne McGinnis, Seat Twenty-One, and again, until no longer serving. The applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners appoint Mr. Richard Walker for Seat Three, Ms. Andrea Davis, Seat Three, correction, for Richard Walker is Seat Two, Ms. Davis is Seat Three, Ms. Sandy Wirick Crane for Seat Four, remaining two-year terms expiring September 30 of 2020, and Ms. Raquel Painter, Seat Seventeen, and Ms. Joanne McGinnis, Seat Twenty-One.
Motion to approve the appointments.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda, we didn't have anything moved. We already had item number eight, Public Comment Section again, which is a five-minute section. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is the second public comment period. In accordance with the board's adopted rules of procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner Comment Period on the agenda. Comments may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the board for up to five minutes each. Mr. Johnny Goins, 164 High Hill Road, Jacksonville.
My name is Johnny Goins. I'm here to speak to you on the tax situation we got. I understand, I'm a businessperson. I've been in business for 35, 40 years here in Onslow County. I also understand we need the money to operate and pay our bills. I understand your positions. The problem I have, sir, my 2017 taxes are due. I go in in February and say I want to make payments on it like I've done the last 10 years. I'm told, no, you have to pay it all at one time. I owe $9,750. Few months later, I receive a letter from an attorney telling me that they're taking a lien on my property. I said, I'm getting my money together. I should have it to you shortly. They said, nope, we've done, turned it over to the attorney. You're going to have to pay the attorney fees and the taxes. My attorney fees were $21,500. I owed you $9,000. I agree, we got to have money to operate. The problem I have, I found out just today, that I believe it is Mr. Smith, the director, has been there for 13 years. Some of this money is owed, that owed to the county before 13 years, since he's been there. I'm asking you people, how many years can you work for Onslow County, not collect your taxes, not do your job, and still have a job? How are we doing this? It's wrong. Now, what I would ask the county to do, and I think this is fair, because taxes override, tax liens overrides everybody's money, I don't care who it is. Change the rule, vote, and only allow them to take it on one property at a time, get the guy's attention, and say, hey, you pay it, or we're going to do it all. Not anyone in this building, I don't know, could walk up right now, tomorrow morning, write a check for $21,000, just to blow away. But it ended up being a total of $31,000. Hey, we need to look at what's going on in the county. I mean, even the county commissioners know, you don't do your job in four years, you can go from number two to number five. And we got a tax person that didn't do his job for 13 years, and he's still got a job? How is that possible? It's not. It shouldn't be. Who's he getting to? Okay. What I'm asking people is Commissioners, vote. You got the power to do it. One at a time. People are losing their houses, their land, and I know numerous of peoples. We got one gentleman here in Onslow County that owes over $200,000. He paid $100,000, and he got an extension. Why did I not get an extension and a phone call to say, hey, you only got to give us $5,000, and two days later you can give us, or later you can give us the other? We allowed this gentleman to do that because he's well-connected in Onslow County. People, we got to make a change. Election's coming up. Stand up for the people. Stand up for the people in Onslow County. We need you. We need each and every one of you. I've asked Commissioners to call me, I've called the board, I've still not got phone calls, and I've still not. I paid the $21,000. Thank God someone loaned it to me. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Another speaker? Okay, we at the Managers' Comment Section, Mr. Cotton. I'm sure you have a few things, but you would like to enlighten us on?
Sure. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Just a few things. The debris is being picked up. According to Crowder Golf, we are approximately halfway through our first pass. We will be making a second pass throughout the entire county. If need be, we will ask them to, to make a third pass, but after the second pass, they'll, they'll assess it and, and give us an opinion. They, they should be here through the end of the year, I would anticipate, but we will give everyone notice of when that second pass will start, and, and when we anticipate that they will be in, in different sections or areas of the county. They, they are moving at a, at a rather quick pace, so it's changing daily. It's a very fluid operation. And the other thing that I would like to, to touch on briefly, based on a conversation with a Commissioner right before the, the meeting, the Commissioners, of course, had a meeting with the Board of Education to talk about how we can, as community partners, help them and, and get them back open for students and teachers. One item that was discussed was the, the county's fund balance and, and how we go about helping bridge that gap and how we arrived at the $5 million figure. Just a brief overview, our fund balance is, is broken down into several different categories. One is non-expendables, and of course, that's your inventory and, and your prepaid's, and what's considered a prepaid are your insurance premiums. And inventory is anything that we use to provide services. That's our tires that we need for our vehicles, to the office supplies that we need to, to conduct business. Within our restricted category, so it's non, non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and then unassigned. The, the unassigned is, is what really the Commissioners can, can move around if, if the need arise, and it certainly has, which is why we, the Commissioners voted to move the $5,000. So in restricted, there is a stabilization by state statute. That is just under 19 million. Of course, you know, this is not, this is not cash. This is a, this is a receivable. This is something that's been promised or is coming due to the county, so we book that as a receivable. Our health programs, that is reserved for the specific grants that we receive within our health department and other departments that have health programs. And of course, with those grants, they only can be spent for eligible expenditure, expenses or expenditures. Adoption programs, self-explanatory. Our drug enforcement, let me back up, the health promotions, that's 3.46 million. Drug enforcement is 350,000. It's restricted for specific law enforcement functions. Our occupancy tax is right at 2.7 million. That is governed by North Carolina General Statute, how we may use it, and what eligible, again, expenses and expenditures as it pertains to tourism and tourism-related functions. And then economic development, and that is 167,000. So that's restricted for use as, as it pertains to economic development activities, not just within Burton Park, but within Onslow County's jurisdictional boundaries. All of those are restricted, meaning that they cannot be used for, for another purpose other than what they are designated. Now, committed, first is our disaster contingency. Several boards ago, they, they had the foresight, and, and this board has seen the, the wisdom and, and continued that, that good planning measure of providing for roughly 5.2 million in disaster contingency. It allows the county to prepare for, respond to, and recover from, to a certain extent, any natural or man-made disaster. Now, of that 5.1, that was pre-Florence. We have roughly 3.7 of that 5.1 encumbered, primarily due to debris removal. That's just, that's over 3 million by itself throughout the county. That relieved, that leaves a remaining balance of just under 1.5 million for the remainder of the fiscal year, and we, we do have, of course, on, on the coast, not only are we subject to hurricanes, but we could experience an ice storm and anything in between. So until FEMA and/or insurance starts to reimburse the county, we, we are left with 1.5 to respond to any future man-made or natural disasters. 20.8 million in our capital improvements, and that's, again, in the committed category. This is tied to any construction project, whether it be within the, the school system or the county. That, that's the total amount identified and designated there, and that is currently obligated for projects that have been constructed, were occupying, and of course, as you know, the Commissioners just recently approved two new schools for the school system, and those funds contemplate taking on that, that debt service as well. Other employee benefits, just under half a million. That is, those are reserved for health, for our health insurance plan. Workers' comp, that is just over 500,000, and that's to settle workers' comp claims. The LEOs, Special Allowance, that is mandated by North Carolina General Statute. It's a separation allowance or retirement allowance for local sworn law enforcement officers above and beyond all other public employees. Currently, there is nothing designated in that, in that line item. So that, that ends it for committed. The assigned, that is 15.5 million, and assigned, we have identified subsequent years expenditures. So to balance this fiscal year's budget, we appropriated 15.5 million to accomplish that. And coming down to unassigned, it's just over $2 million. So where we drew the 5 million was actually from the capital improvements. There was a school, I think, in three, three fiscal years, when the debt would roll on, that had monies encumbered or tied to it. We were able to free that up and use funds to, to give to, or, I'm sorry, to advance to the school system. And of course, that, those monies would be replenished once they start receiving FEMA and/or insurance claim, claim monies to come back in. So that is what totals the roughly 72 million, but of that, 2 million is unassigned. And as I'd mentioned, this time of year, just, just as a function of the, the time of year, when tax bills come due, the, the county is using its reserves right now to keep the lights on, pay the bills, pay, you know, pay salary and, and pay, pay debt service. So there, there's no capacity beyond that. That's, that's why we've had a conference call with the LGC last week, and I have another conference call set up with the school system, the Local Government Commission, and the Office of State Budget Management to discuss what our options are, and hopefully the OSBM will be able to give us a little bit more insight as to what the, the governor's intentions are for his, his plan in helping the counties that were devastated recover and infuse with, with hopefully low-interest loans and/or grants at a little bit quicker pace than, than FEMA or a typical loan process could accomplish. So that's what I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. That's basically- That's basically, the $5 million is basically a loan based on our capital improvement projects. And we get that money back when we get the insurance or when the school gets their insurance or reimbursement. So really, we have to take that out of fund balance, basically.
I don't think that's a loan. It's an advance, like you said.
Yes, sir.
It's an advance. There's a difference between a loan and an advance. We're getting back the reimbursement, we're not charging interest or anything like that, so let's make that clear. It's an advance. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Bennett.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to send my thanks to the School Board for getting us a plan, for getting kids back in school. I know everybody's excited about that. Also, I want to thank our legislative delegation, because I understand that they have been able to appropriate some money, some more additional funds for the School Board, even though that's not nearly enough yet, but a little bit at a time, I guess. I want to thank Mr. Curtis for coming to speak. I'm not sure how we can help with that, but I'm sure we can look into your situation, see if we can help with that. And for Mr. Goins, I appreciate you being here. But I do need to defend our tax collector, Mr. Harry Smith. He follows the orders of this Board. And before the 2016 election, there was, he did not have the order to go out and collect those taxes that were way past due. And the five of us here chose to go out and collect past-due taxes and try to make up some of that difference for money that we weren't collecting and that the other taxpayers were being forced to supplement because we weren't able to collect from some people. So I would just say that it's not Mr. Smith's fault that he didn't collect taxes before this year. That's a function of this Board, and we chose to go after those taxes from past years. And I think it was the right thing to do. Hopefully, next year, we won't have a lot of people who don't want to, who don't pay their taxes. And hopefully, people will be assured that next year, we're going to go after unpaid, uncollected taxes, just like we did this year. So thank you for being here. I feel for your plight. Hopefully, that won't happen again. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for Angela and the Health Department report. We appreciate that. Have a good night.
Commissioner Buchanan.
Thank you, sir. Just a few things. I want to thank Elizabeth and Angela for their reports. It's always good to have those reports, knowing what's going on within our county. And Sherry, thank you for the grant that was well-needed. And I know the Sheriff has participated, and so has Chief Yanero. And we're really proud of that because that grant's going to be a whole lot of help to us in this community, and it helps a whole lot. David, thank you for the hard work that you've been doing. It's been tough. It's been tough on those five Commissioners sitting up here, dealing with this hurricane and dealing with these monies with the Board of Education and everything else. And I want to thank all the staff for the hard work, and our attorney also. I mean, you've been very helpful, going back and forth with all these emails that we've been dealing with. And I can share with you that the people of Onslow County are very proud of what we do, but there are some that are upset with us right now because the debris hasn't been picked up. And I think Commissioner Bright shared something with me a while ago, that if it's in black plastic bags, they're not picking it up. There has to be clear. And I think, David, is that correct? That's interesting, because in the city of Swansboro where I live, and we had, you know, I lost quite a bit of my house, and we had black bags, and they picked them up, every bit of it. So I don't know what the difference is from Swansboro's crew picking it up or the county, but I wanted to share that with you. Thank you, and thank everybody for being here.
Commissioner Price.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Cotton for that clarifying information on the fund balance. Some people have this inaccurate perception that this Board of Commissioners doesn't care about getting the schools, kids back in the schools, and that couldn't be as, any further from the truth. And so I appreciate him providing that clarification there. If we had $51 million sitting around, we could write a check. We don't have $51 million sitting around. And so we did what we could to help the schools, to provide that bridge, that gap, to allow to keep that contractor working. And so that's what that was for. Our thoughts and prayers are with those dealing with Hurricane Michael in the Panhandle of Florida as well. They went through a terrific historic storm as well. And so we're thinking about them. Also, I'd like to thank all those who are continuing to bring, that are working to bring our schools up to a standard where the kids can return. As Commissioner Bennett mentioned, there is a plan to bring them back in three stages, as he talked about. And in the meantime, our teachers are out there running what they call these pop-up sessions of learning sites. And so I thank them and the band directors and the coaches that are continuing to work with our students to try to keep them connected and have some aspect of some schedule in place, and still working with them as they're bridging the gap, so to speak, as well. Also, thank you to our public libraries and our churches and other organizations that have opened up space, not only during the hurricane, but now during these pop-up sessions that the schools are using. Another thing I'd like to mention, I look forward to the Public Education Steering Committee meetings that I'll be attending for North Carolina Association of County Commissioners on October 30 to work on legislative goals for the next session of our state legislature for our Association of County Commissioners. Some of the issues we'll be talking about is statewide bond, increasing lottery funding, sales tax flexibility, and calendar flexibility for our schools as well. And thank you to all those who are here tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Just got a few things. First, my condolences to you, Mr. Chair, on your recent loss. You know, I feel for you, and just know that we're here for you. I want to thank the Board members, the other fellow Commissioners here, for being there, being able to talk, shoot straight, and discuss the issues. And if you can't get any more transparent than what David just did, and I hope you people realize that out there in G10, he just gave you the fund balance, and he gave you a breakdown of exactly what we can and cannot spend. And to be quite frankly, I'm a little upset about certain people thinking that we don't care about our kids. It's the farthest thing from the truth, and I'm going to say it on record. We care about our kids. That's our number-one priority, at least for me it is, getting back into school. But you know what? I want them back into a safe school where there's no mold, safe for the teachers as well. Okay? So when I hear people complain that we're not doing our job, we had meetings with the BOE to find a way to get funds for them. And we're still looking, we're still exploring avenues of additional revenue stream to come in to help our school system. So if you want to complain about us not caring, I just don't want to hear it, because it's not true. And I'm a straight shooter, and I'll tell you like it is. We're working hard. We've been on the phone with each other. We've been talking. We've been talking with BOE meetings, or members. In fact, I talked to one BOE member today in my truck at a traffic light, because I happened to see him putting up his signs. And we sat there and discussed the situation, and I pulled off the side of the road to talk to him about it. So that's how important it is for us. Okay? So I want the public to understand that, that we care about our kids. And again, David, thank you for your transparency. Man, I was listening intently to everything you were saying. I really knew what you were going to say, but to see you sit here and do that in front of everybody, I applaud you for that, because you can't get any more transparent than that. Sean, Mr. Goins, I sympathize with you guys. Maybe we can talk offline about your situation a little more, because I am interested. Sean, I don't know what to tell you. We'd have to take a look at that and maybe see if we can do something, if there's anything we can do. But I appreciate both of you coming up here and speaking, you know, speaking the truth, speaking like it is. So I appreciate you both for doing that. And Angela, Beth, Sherry, all you guys out there that are doing a great job with all the projects that we got going on. I'm really excited about the detox center and the crisis center, because I think it's needed. And despite Hurricane Florence and all the things that came up and all the priorities, we still stayed on top of that. Or I should say, Sherry, you still stayed on top of that to keep it going. And Sheriff Miller, I applaud your efforts with Sherry, with that grant. That is much needed. And to me, that just shows how the community, with the Sheriff's Department, the government, are all working together for one purpose. And that's what it's all about. So I'm not trying to be negative in my comments. I'm a little frustrated, I guess, with some of the stuff that I hear, because I hear stuff that's not true. You know, we just had a major catastrophic event come through our county. I mean, one of our Commissioners and some of our staff members have lost their homes, along with all of you out there. My daughter's house is trashed. Okay? This is a time for all of us to pull together and not complain and whine, do what's best for our community. And I hope people out there will listen to that and understand that, that we need to work together to get through this. Not everybody's going to be happy, but we're here, we're alive, and we'll get through this. So thank you for all for coming tonight. I just felt I had to express myself a little bit, and I appreciate everybody in this county. I'm proud of the members of this county. I'm proud of all the work that they continue to do. And once again, David, bravo for your transparency. Thank you.
All I have, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We adjourn.